Good evening. We'd like to call to order a special board meeting, which will sit in progress soon, to order Tuesday, June 4th.
Will the board members who are present please respond? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Caffey?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
There.
Ms. Feeney?
Ms. Page?
Please welcome Madam Chair.
The next item on the agenda is to receive for adoption the approved 2019, 2020, and 2019, I believe, through 2023, so that the budget's...
So, board members, purpose of this meeting is to do initial work regarding the adoption of the budget. We have had several proposals to be presented by board members. And also at this time, Mrs. Simmons, as a special patient, patient administrator...
Are you live streaming?
Yeah. It's streaming right now. Oh. This has an issue.
Good evening, school board. What we are projecting, what I pass out, is a summary document that highlights all the lease term changes between FY19 to FY20. This is very similar to the page 23 from last year's adopted board document. So just to walk through this, first section is salary benefits. This is inclusive of the teacher rates. Moving down, we have all of these staffing additions, also including these teacher plan staffing additions. In the next page, we have these staffing eliminations. This is the list. The next page are our NPS, our non-personnel placement measures, but they're working out by additions, including the scrap plan and eliminations down at the bottom, carrying on to the next page. And at the bottom are the new budget pressure that we discussed in the last couple of board meetings.
Ms. Gibson?
Are there any changes to this document, to the one that we received a couple of weeks ago?
There is. The big change is the severance that's been added into this document. And accessing virtual Virginia to buy our funds to cover that severance. I'll hit the very last page.
Ms. Lawler?
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit more to the virtual Virginia funds and why they've been identified at this point?
Yeah. So, virtual Virginia, I think, is a great fund to use for one-time expenses, as you talked about severance, when you're one-time, and it seems to fit into that budget. Using these funds for this is going to complete that fund until next fiscal year, and we anticipate about another $200,000 to add to that account.
Can you read that here?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
I sent an email earlier with a request for some budget items. I just wanted to follow up to see if any of that is in your file.
Yeah, we received the email at about 3:00 PM. We're heading to address everything, but we did go back to some work that we did transportation plans, backhand numbers, including the assumption to cause to right side transportation to make everything hold there. I think the ideal state for transportation is to move away from those and then to just routes in the locations where they're located. To do that, it's going to take an additional eight buses, just about $8 million, and we are anticipating additional $10.5 million in the mix of bus operator positions and mechanics.
Can you say that? Can you go through that once again?
Yes. It's about $8 million in buses. About 2.5 in full-time bus operator positions, mechanics, and subs. So it's a mix of those three positions.
Ms. Gibson?
So, I just wanted to, regarding the other items, they weren't, those were not new requests, and I had sent a couple of notes regarding middle school specifically. And I believe that a lot of that information, in terms of at least from an FTE count standpoint, should be captured in the document that we discussed, that the academic team had compiled regarding the middle school program.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Dr. Al.
Oh, sorry. Can you restate your question, please?
So, essentially, I think it's important to understand the full cost of implementing the middle school program to align with the Virginia State Code. And at the meeting where we discussed the middle school program, you had said that your team compiled a document that could provide a deep dive of what was needed in each building, and so I've sent a couple of requests for that, because I think that would help to illustrate what the, what that would look like from a, at least from an FTE count standpoint, to be able to look at potential costs there.
So, first, I think there's some difference of opinion here. Basically, analysis that the state did, our middle school programming does align with state standards. There's a different interpretation of the PE and physical ed requirements. That said, we want to make sure that we're meeting the spirit and interest of the feedback we heard from the community, which is in particular primarily a structure of the day. For example, moving from having, say, only five elective periods available to six, eliminating the study hall. But staff was, current staff was staffing that time, and so we do not believe we need to add additional staff, nor are we prepared to do so. So, at the last board meeting, when we talked about priorities for the middle school schedule, the feedback that I heard was that we need to focus on equity of advanced course sections, and that we needed to do much more work that would take the next year to really figure out and overhaul to get all the schedules, all the middle schools on the same page. It's my assessment, based on the data that we have, to the best of our ability, and again, I want to reiterate, we know that our data is not fully reliable, that we can implement our schedule with the staff we have. I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
So, Dr. Al, to your point, so I attended a couple of the middle school meetings, and very diverse group of participants across sections of the city, and it was loud and clear, parents as well as students stressed the importance of equity, and looking at equity of life, and making sure that the options available in U.C. Brown should be available at Albert Hill and U.S. Public School. So, there's a lot of good positive feedback, and so I want to ask, so, what you have, what you have proposed, if it meets the standards of quality?
Yes. I want to be clear, and I can share, we can certainly share this with the board, the state did give us our findings, their findings, on the review of our middle school schedule, and the PE and health requirement is, I think, intentionally and frustratingly vague. And the state, I can, so I can pass that guidance along, because I do think that there's a difference of interpretation. That said, of course, we believe students should have the opportunity for movement and physical activity every single day. However, some students may want to pursue that via dance. So you might say, well, not every student gets PD and health, but the regs say physical movement. And I would argue that if a student wants to pursue dance because that's their passion, they should be allowed to do that and not be forced to take a PD and health class. Similarly, there are students who really love band and want to go deep in band. So, students should be able to have that option to take band every year, even if that forecloses other elective opportunities, because they've chosen to do band all year rather than two exploratory elective classes. So, the draft schedule, I actually just spoke with Solomon Jefferson today and Dr. Neighbors about engaging with our middle schools in terms of next steps here, based on our last conversation. They are in the process of having conversations with middle school principals to map out their schedule, they're obviously starting master schedule, and the minimum requirements that I've given them are, it must comply with the SOQ, both in terms of the minimum number of electives offered, that doesn't mean students have to take those, we just have to offer a total of four options. That doesn't mean students must take four options. So, that is one. Two is, they need to comply, obviously, with what the state has given us on PE and health. Three, we need to not have a mandatory intervention period or study hall, as it's called at some schools, such that it precludes students from taking a second elective. And third, we need to address the number of sections as it relates to advanced math and science courses. So that was my understanding of the will of the board from the last meeting in terms of prioritization. When, we are not in a position to overhaul our entire middle school staffing and scheduling, and I think it would not be wise to do so, given that we're in a rezoning process. So, any major leveling that would happen, or staffing projections that would happen, I would presume would happen at the, for the 2021 school year, based on the rezoning. So, that all said, if staff, what I directed Mr. Solomon to let me know is, if the schools feel that they do need FTEs after looking at their schedule, we can have that conversation, and we will level out. For example, we do have some elementary schools that are under-enrolled and have small class sizes, significantly small class sizes. So we are not doing a massive leveling right now because of the rezoning effort, but Mr. Hughes and I believe we have a few FTEs to flex as needed, based on where, where the budget requires, rather than a massive overhaul here. And I'm happy to share that as soon as I have those middle school schedules from, from Mr. Solomon and Dr. Neighbors.
Ms. Lawler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you speak anecdotally about what you mean by really small class sizes that would be small enough that you would consider...
Sure. So, I don't want to misspeak, so I'm going to give rough numbers, so, and I can follow with Zach's. Gitcher Park, for example, has four kindergarten classrooms, but 48 students total. So, I wouldn't combine two of them, but I think you could probably have three classes instead of four, if those numbers don't change. That would be an example.
Just a comment, I'm very, thank you for being responsive to your request, and I am really, really happy that we'll be able to offer five, six classes for students next year, so thank you for your work on that.
One other thing I do want to add, that I think might speak to your interest, Ms. Gibson, is, in our strategic plan, we do have a line item for funding 10 additional enrichment positions for our PE, health, band, etc. And while those are intended primarily for elementary school, we've asked Mr. Hughes and the director team to do an analysis to figure out where those are most needed. And so, for example, if there is a middle school that does not have a world language FTE that really needs it, we, Mr. Camerson's made it clear that he would be open to that as a proposal. So we do have those 10 positions as it relates to special positions, that we can also, that's also built into the strategic plan.
We'll have a record effect of the venue, Ms. Caffey.
Do we have any other questions from board members before Ms. Gibson asks her question? Ms. Gibson?
This is also about the middle school. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, or that we're clear, in terms of the potential pilot, and what would be then executed at some of the schools, or...
So, Mr. Solomon, sorry, Mr. Solomon. Mr. Jefferson is having conversations with principals this week, so I will be able to come back to you. I think we are not ready to take on, again, a consistent schedule across all middle schools. We haven't had a chance to engage all teachers in those changes, families, etc. We think that's a massive lift to do carefully. So we are looking to schools that are already primed or ready for that change, in terms of piloting a new schedule. So, for example, we know that Albert Hill has expressed consistently that they would like a different schedule, both teachers and, and family. And so, that is a school where it would make sense to start, because the conditions on the ground are already positive, or there's already a desire for a changed schedule. If there's another school where the staff and family are kind of like, it's, it's okay, we want to add some offerings, but we're not looking to do a massive change, we would not push that hard this year, because we don't feel like we have the time to do that correctly. Does that help?
I mean, so, just a couple of points. So, one, it's my understanding that there's been a meeting scheduled at Albert Hill for parents tomorrow to talk about the pilot, so, and I guess, I, I, I hear that, whatever the concerns are with the middle school program and our compliance are reasonable enough to look at making changes. And I hear that certain schools are asking for changes and other schools may not be, but from an equity standpoint, while that may be what we're hearing, I question a plan where we're not making the need across the district, if we know in fact that, you know, that, that if we're piloting it, and these are going to offer more opportunity for students, that we wouldn't look to do that on a, on a wider scale.
Ms. Caffey?
I'm just, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so, with piloting, is it Albert Hill, Hill, and what's the other school?
We have, there is, we have not identified the full schools. Mr. Jefferson is having conversations. We, when we say pilot, I would say, I may misspeak, we need to make scheduling changes. We are not ready to roll out a universal middle school schedule, I would say, we are not ready to impose a universal middle school schedule at this point in the year. Albert Hill I use as an example, because the, all constituents have expressed concern in changing the way the school day is structured. To me, that is separate from equity of opportunities. So, every school will have, be in compliance and have equity of electives and be in compliance with the range of electives, our middle schools. I shared the data with you all last time, and the most concerning data point from last time, in terms of equity, was the number of sections for algebra and earth science at our schools. We are tackling those regardless of how the master schedule changes at those respective schools. I believe that was MLK and...
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was on there. And also, as we talk about piloting, I've said this before, I'm going to keep saying it until some action is done, and I hope it is not discounted. But, you know, the, the staff at MLK, they're ready for changes, preferably looking at a year-round calendar. So, as we go into this, as we convene plan, I don't know if that will be feasible, of course, for this upcoming school year, but definitely the planning is best to take place, and you do have administration and you have staff that are willing to embrace a different model.
I certainly will welcome any of those recommendations, so happy to talk with those folks.
Ms. Dorr?
I just want to state for the record, the meeting tomorrow is not related to scheduling, that was a rumor, so I think we need to be careful about rumors that is related to a principal process. Second, I want to state for the record, also, that I hope that Albert Hill is not receiving preferential treatment. I too care about equity of opportunity for all of our middle schools, and so, while I happen to know intricately about some of the challenges at Albert Hill, I also understand that these are challenges district-wide, and I, third thing that I want to say is that I fully also support the approach of talking to principals and customizing a plan that works for them. I think we should do more of that.
Ms. Young?
I just, just want to acknowledge my colleague from the sixth. My ears peeked up when I heard reference to year-round school, I was really disappointed, though I'm very ecstatic about the strategic plan and what I'm confident it will accomplish. One of the things that was removed from the strategic plan everyone will remember was a pilot, a two-year-round school. Chesterfield is doing it, we know Oakwell, for example, just, just initiated it. So, I love, I love the conversation, and I would really encourage us to this summer, perhaps revisit that, that discussion, because the community did speak to that, and it was in the initial draft, so I'm really pleased to hear that.
So, board members, information that we have shared is good information, and what we have tasked the administration to do, but again, just as a reminder, we are here for the budget discussion, and also with the intent to adopt the budget.
Last thing, just to be really clear, every middle school is having a conversation, to, to use Ms. Dorr's words, to customize the schedule and specific scheduling changes that need to happen for next year, and to ensure what we've been discussing around state requirements, options, and equity of advanced math and science courses is available. So I want to make sure that that is loud, and I'm going to make sure that's very clear. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Madam Chair, is there any more questions?
Before, do you make a motion? Katie White, continue to the party. Katie White is there, and while you're working on that, Ms. Gibson, there are another questions.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Dorr for the clarity on the meeting tomorrow.
So, Ms. Young, I don't want to assume, but Katie White...
Yes, ma'am. My first motion up to, the first motion regards striking the $400,000 in severance is a legible, I'm sorry, striking $400,000 in severance for the employees that have been dismissed. I would continue my first motion.
We need a second. If there's no second, the motion to remove the severance, $400,000, if there is no second to that motion, it has failed for the like of second. And before we continue, we'd like to recognize former school board member, Ms. Mamie Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second motion is to adopt $705,000 in savings as previously introduced, but I did bring additional paper copies, if you'd like for me to distribute those. I can read that aloud, but since I did it last night, you would like for me to, yes, ma'am? All right. One, the school board budget will reduce personnel costs by cutting a court position, saving $54,736 in salary, plus other compensation, including healthcare, social security, retirement, etc. Anticipate it to generate savings of approximately $5,000, this budget code 516. Number two, the school board will not renew its contract for legal services, but will rather hire an attorney to not exceed total compensation, including social security, healthcare, retirement, etc., of $310,000. This will generate savings of $130,000, budget code 543. Number three, professional development staff downtown will be reduced by additional $136,505, plus other compensation, including healthcare, social security, and retirement, etc. Altogether, this will generate savings anticipated to be approximately $179,000, budget code 515. Number four, hearing office will reduce in staff from three to two, realizing savings of approximately $100,000, this budget code 5224. Number five, the school board will eliminate district funds and rather allocate to teacher retirement benefits, materializing in savings of $31,500, this budget code 546. The school board will reduce civilians' budget by $10,000, achieving savings comparable. Number seven, the spiral will be further reduced to complement first round budget cuts, two additional 513 positions be cut, with one accounting for other compensation, is anticipated to generate approximate savings of $170,000, total savings of $705,500.
So, there's a motion to... So there's a motion to adopt $705,000 in savings as presented by Ms. Young. Is there a second? Seeing there's no second, the motion has failed. Ms. Dor?
I would like to make a motion. I sent this around to the board earlier today, but I'll read it now. So one, the school board budget will reduce personnel costs by cutting a position, saving $54,736 in salary and other compensation, including healthcare, social security, retirement, et cetera. Anticipate it to generate savings of approximately $85,000. Two, the school board will conduct a review of its contract for legal services. It will benchmark best practices with the counties and district to determine whether to in-source or outsource its legal administration. The school board will bring its research for discussion and action at the first meeting in December, potential to save $130,000 annually. Three, the school board will reduce its meals budget by $10,000, achieving savings of $10,000. And if you support this, I will commit to raising that money for us and for our staff. Four, the superintendent will reduce reserve contingencies in his budget by $75,000 to generate savings of $75,000. Five, the strategic plan banquet funding of $100,000 will also pay for the retirement banquet to achieve savings of $6,000. Six, the administration will review software subscription and identify $100,000 in savings. One example of potential savings is Exello, a platform to enable students to develop career plans online that cost the district $50,000 a year, estimated savings of $100,000. Seven, the school board will participate in a textbook buyback program. Discuss this with Dr. F, estimated revenue of $75,000. Eight, the administration will in-source some of its translation services. Again, discuss this with Dr. F, estimated savings of $50,000. Total of $401,000 in savings. That does not include the legal savings in that number.
One second.
Can you write the motion down? It's been moved by Ms. Dor and seconded by Ms. Young.
Can I make one comment about Exello? We looked into that particular system and it's funded through Title IV and perkins. So they think that's a great investment for that.
We discussed this, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Cameron. My point in highlighting Exello is that we have a, I looked at the check register this weekend and I pulled all expenditures under $200,000. And we have a number of 25, 30, 40, $50,000 software contracts that I can't imagine we're totally reaping the value of. And so I believe that there are at least $100,000 in savings there. So I'd like to task administration to find that.
It's been moved by Ms. Dor and seconded by Ms. Young to approve the budget proposal. May I, board member, agree on it? Any discussion? Ms. Gibson?
I would like, I understand there's also another proposal from Dr. Sapini that I would like to at least have presented before a vote.
So we have to deal with the motion that's on the floor. And so as Ms. Dor just said about tasking administration, I would just to like to echo that. And I know this is in progress with the needs assessments as far as programs that we have, may not be, you know, we're using them or programs, other programs in existence to make sure that we're getting the best thing for our, you know, for our dollar. So I would like to make sure that we receive an update regarding that as well.
Ms. Ball?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. F, can you speak with, is there any, oh, there, can you speak to the textbook buyback program? What that looks like and how we anticipate $75,000 in revenue?
Yes, so we've just recently begun this work where Follett, our inventory partner, has gone to each of our schools and inventory textbooks that are in closets, that are outdated, out of adoption and not being used. And just as in, they are now working on similar items that are in the warehouse that are out of adoption. And so we do not have a total number yet because they're still in progress. But just to give an example, at one site for out-of-adoption history books, that was a $3,000 estimate of a buyback revenue. So I think we believe, based on what we're seeing, that we will be able, we are anticipating approximately between 100 and 150,000. But we do not have firm, a firm number yet because that's still in the works. But given 44 schools times years of out-of-adoption books, we think that there's a significant revenue stream there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm also curious about what we mean by in-sourcing translation services. And my impression is that we still have work to do with regard to communicating with students. Someone and I were speaking about this prior to the meeting, of students and their families. So I'm curious to know how this would impact, A, how it would impact our ability to provide those services to families and then B, what exactly that would look like in terms of work for these presumably, for these staff members who presumably will have to pick up that slide.
Yes, so we, early on, we did kind of like an audit of our translation services with our major vendor, who is providing a lot of our interpretation and translation. And what we found out is that a lot of schools were putting in requests for hours that even weren't being used. And we also had more internal capacity to do the work that wasn't being utilized. So we were able to pilot some of those structures this year. If you can remember, in the strategic plan, we doubled the capacity of the welcome center. So this year, our team is a little bit bigger. We had members of our team go through the city's programs to become licensed interpreters. So we've been able to utilize internal staff to be able to do this work and have found savings throughout the year. So based on the savings we had throughout the year, we were able to think next year we can continue to use that as well as increase it. So I wouldn't say that we're taking anything away, but we're more so pivoting our strategy to having internal people do that versus taking something away. Actually, we'll have more capacity and especially with people who have connections with our families to do the work. And a lot of those have been hires because of what you put in for the strategic plan to double our capacity.
Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that we are considering the textbook buyback program. I think years ago, we used to have something in place many years ago. And it does make a difference because otherwise those books just end up in a dumpster, which I can't see throwing away books. So this is, this is an excellent strategy. And there are countries and across the world, as well as cities right here in the United States, that could benefit from that. The other item I appreciate on Mrs. Dor's proposal, the $10,000 with the meals. Thank you so very much. I just said you were going to raise the money, but this is passed. I'm sure many of us will be, only speak for myself, to be in support of that, yes, yes. And I'm, I'm going to vote in favor on this. Number one, because we haven't touched the strategic plan here. And I want to make sure that our children aren't doing this out anymore. We can't do everything exactly right. Last night, as I reflected upon our meeting, everybody said, we must do what is right. We're going to do the right thing. Let's get it right. So it's evident that all of us want to make decisions in the best interest of our children, however, being mindful of what is right, what is right. So in looking at this, I'm voting in support of it. Number one, because it does not touch the strategic plan, but knowing that it is a living document. And number two, we have to move forward. We have to move forward in the best interest of each child in mind. And number three, the things you need to add, the things you need to add as time goes on. But right now, we are at the point of moving forward in the best interest of every child. So I appreciate this proposal. I am going to vote in favor of that. Thank you so very much.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I would like to reiterate the request to have Dr. Sapini read the...
Ms. Gibson, we have a motion on the floor. We need to address that before we discuss another motion.
I would ask that you not interrupt while I'm speaking.
Ms. Gibson, and I would ask you that we follow the process. We have a motion on the floor.
So I would like to finish my statement, which is that I respect that there's a motion on the floor. And essentially, my expectation is that the motion on the floor will pass. And I would ask that we allow Dr. Sapini to, at the very least, read his proposal so that that can be considered potentially as people are weighing their decision on this final vote of our budget, which will impact the lives of 74 positions. It's a big decision for us to make as a board. And I don't believe that spending the time to, to at the very minimum, read through it would be an injustice to the process.
And before, Ms. Young, or, Ms. Young, before we move on to your question, when we have a motion on the floor, a motion must receive a second in order for it to proceed, to move on. If not, it will fail. I mean, that's with any motion. So that's, that's the process according to rules.
Ms. Young?
I don't want to violate rules, but I wonder if Pat could just could read his, not just, not the way of the motion, because opposite of that would be a violation. But if he could just read it in a way that's germane to the motion on the, read it as an inquiry, perhaps in a way that's germane somehow to the motion, if that'd be permissible. I'm trying to split the baby here.
I'm just trying to follow the process.
So they're going to do that. As my back to looking just basically for this. Strategic Plan 2.1, reducing the two senior HR specialists for saving the 181, the 80. And the marketing recruitment to reduce that by 150. I'm just going, we have things to sort of them. Strategic Plan 2.2, referral bonuses, 2.5 stipend for equity, 2.7, excellent gala. I've struck 3.1 and added Ms. Dor's meals. 3.2, the travel stipend. 3.4, the other, the team building retreat, 3.5, the annual celebration. 3.6, the other celebration, 4.2, the home visits. And all that with a total of 845,183. And with that, we'd be able to have 10 attended officers. Have the DPI manager back, considering that we've been getting, having so many issues with DPI, electronic maintenance tech, which, there's new buildings coming up. I was concerned about that. Of course, we also have an issue with custodians, so we have two of those. So we have a grand total of 551,905 for personnel and 308,277, which would remain for middle school.
Hard question. So the motion on the floor was the motion made by Ms. Dor, seconded by Ms. Young, Mr. Young's decision. And it's to approve the budget proposed, proposal made by board member Dor. And I want to reread these list of proposals unless you would like for me to? No, okay, thank you. Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
All right.
Ms. Cosby? No. No. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion 10 is 6-0. I'm sorry. 6-3, I am recuperating from asthma, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ball?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still looking at Dr. Sapini's proposal. And I'm curious about the 303,277,5 for middle schools and what, what the expectation would be for that.
Dr. Sapini?
Well, unfortunately, we haven't been given any numbers specific to middle schools as far as what we need to address. I was trying to allocate some funds to help support that.
So, Dr. Sapini, is there a motion?
Well, you guys have any questions? No.
I just want to, I just want to check to see where we are. Do we need a motion to approve the complete budget? Or, okay, with the, as presented by the administration with the amendments that were just passed from Ms. Dor's motion?
Yeah, but...
We need a motion for that.
Scott, with this proposal? No, I was just questioning whether Dr. Sapini would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my question is for Dr. Sapini, related to the amount left over for home visits? Scott, what's your question? Where the specific number came from for home visits, the 78? Oh, the, because I, I wasn't, I'm trying to figure out if that's the exact amount that we had allocated. And the special, more sure position? Right. It was for, I guess, a super bike. And then with regard to the senior HR specialist, I do, I have viewed HR as a department that, that needs additional support. I have, with nine of the senior level, not the senior level. So do you have to rewire the data here? Do we need more work with these?
Ms. Burke has a question.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget as... Is another one on the table?
It is a certain way, I have to say.
Scott?
Oh, oh.
So do we have more questions regarding Dr. Sapini's information?
I'd like to move that we, uh, amend the budget with the, uh, with the budget proposals set forth by Dr. Sapini.
Uh, Ms. Barlow, I'm sorry, did I acknowledge you? Ms. Burke was, we're waiting to hear from her.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the twenty, the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty operating budget in the amount of three hundred eleven million two hundred thirteen, seven hundred sixty dollars. The C I P twenty twenty-four budget in the amount of nineteen million, and special revenue funding, fund budget in the amount of eighty-seven million two hundred forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars.
Scott? It's been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Ms. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair, I appreciate the, uh, the urge to get the budget passed. I should think that according to Robert's rules, I made the motion prior to, uh, Ms. Burke's, uh, Ms. Burke's motion.
Ms. Barlow, Ms. Burke, and, or she was... He won't be there in five? I'm already clear about him, he had, he had abandoned. So, it's following the process. Any more discussion?
I'm ready to discuss the motion.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, thank you. This evening has been awkward. Um, and I, and, uh, I, I appreciate our desire to adhere to process and policy. But what I, what I am concerned is that I sense that we are, uh, essentially, pushing a process that would turn our board meetings into an episode of Fan of Feud, where it's about who hits the buzzer in time. Ultimately, our goal is to allow the discussion, the debate, and to vote. And clearly, we're beginning out this evening with at least one hour of time, and so I question, um, some of the, some of the pushback. Ultimately, as it pertains to the motion on the table, I will be voting, um, against the, against the, the budget, as amended and proposed, uh, because at the end of the day, this budget does not align with my values. And, um, I am, I, I, I want to express my utmost concern about the, uh, loss that these cuts will, uh, could incur on the district. These are by and large positions that I think are not discretionary. And, um, and I feel overall the amount of, of change that, um, will be felt by this district by so many cuts, so many adds, so many things happening at the same time. I question our ability to, um, to withstand the pressure, uh, incurred by thirteen million dollars worth of cuts, thirteen million dollars worth of adds, uh, transcript issues, rezoning process, uh, all felt, all felt at the same time. I, um, I'm, I'm disappointed especially with the, the processes that pertains to the strategic plan. I voted to adopt the strategic plan, um, as a compromise. There are a lot of things that I am very excited about in the strategic plan, but it was a compromise to me because we did not have a budget in place when we, when we adopted that strategic plan. And I, uh, did not feel that by voting in to adopt a strategic plan, I was also voting to, uh, incur a thirteen million dollar add to our, you know, to our budget that would require us to cut, um, essentially the same amount in, in staff and, and other expenditures. And so, um, I, I am incredibly disappointed and, um, I am eager to hear, uh, more details in terms of transition, in terms of, uh, how our, our staff will, um, compensate for the changes in staff. I'm eager to hear more details in terms of timing for these hires and the, our ability to, um, bring in these folks within a very short timeframe, given our other needs. Um, you know, I'm, I'm eager to hear and to, um, uh, appreciate the, the process and moving forward, uh, because I, I personally need that, that peace of mind. Thank you.
Ms. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that the proposal brought forth by Dr. Sapini has some points that are worth discussing. Uh, I would be encouraged by some word for discussion of whether we may want to make amendments to, uh, to the motion that Ms. Burke, uh, proposed. Uh, there are some areas that I think that, uh, in particular, we can take a look at. I don't know, um, that I'm particularly super hot on some of them, but I do think that, for example, if we could find, uh, a way to, uh, reduce some of the funds for the excellence gala and see if we could get private donors to come up with some other portion, so we can still put on, uh, a great event for our, uh, for our staff, then, you know, we may be in a position to take a look at, uh, at adding a physician back in, or, as I discussed before, coming up with some extra slots for students at Code R B A, which I think would be, um, would be, uh, a great win for our school, especially for those students. Uh, so, um, I, with regard to the process for, uh, for an amendment to the motion, I, I suppose I have to request that from Ms. Burke? If that's from this point now? So... Sure. I move that we reduce the excellence gala, excellence gala allotment from one hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars and add five slots to freshman public schools allotment to Code R B A for the, uh, upcoming school year.
So, you made an amendment to the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So, will you second your data again?
I move that we reduce the excellence ga, excellence gala allocation, uh, that we reduce the allocation from one hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars and add five, uh, seats to freshman public schools allotment to Code R B A for the upcoming school year.
So, there's no... Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll, this is an amendment to the, to the budget, or proposal from Ms. Burke. I'll second that. And I will say that's the only compromise that I, that's the only thing that I want to touch in the strategic plan, because I feel it's very important to maintain the integrity of our strategic plan. But I do think that Mr. Barlow has, Mr. Barlow and Dr. Sapini had a point in regards to the gala.
So, let's make it clear that the debate is regarding the amendment.
Yes. Yeah, can I just jump in? I just want to point out a, a risk. If we reduce the strat plan funding because this isn't a contingency account and needs to go back to council, so we could be on the hook for five additional Code R B A slots we have to pay for if council decides not to approve this, this change.
Ms. Young?
And we should also check with Code R B A to see if it's accepting applications.
Ms. Young and Ms. Gibson?
Just, just last week, I spent some time over there at Code R B A. And I was so impressed, really, really impressed. First and foremost, with our two, the two young persons that hosted me, but really the entire curriculum and program. And, uh, like Scott, I really want to see us scale that up in a big way. I think it's a terrific program. They're growing to two hundred and fifty-nine students next year from something like a hundred and fifty this year. I've had conversations with Mike, uh, John over there, he's running the program, and I know he wants more. In fact, he affirmed that on Thursday. I can't speak to the application process, but I just got some more to, has some more expertise now. But, uh, I will also, uh, be supporting, uh, Mr. Barlow and Ms. Door in terms of this motion.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Burke, and Ms. Owen?
Um, so I, I, I do support making adjustments to the strategic plan budget to put towards, um, uh, critical needs and so, but from my perspective, things that I would be willing to put, uh, those dollars towards includes attendance officers, includes DPI staff, includes, um, custodians, and I was, as I understand it, there are staff members that are responsible for cleaning our carpets in the schools that, um, have had their positions eliminated. So, uh, custodians, um, turnaround arts, uh, there, there are a host of, of services that are going to be impacted by these cuts that, for me, uh, uh, take, take priority. And, um, and while I appreciate the, uh, the, the desire to, um, to make some changes and, and, and believe me, I mean, for as many hours as we've been discussing about the budget, essentially, the discussion, the true discussion about the budget, in my, my opinion, has lasted about an hour this evening, and I'm, I'm thankful that we're having it. But I, um, fortunately, I do not support the amendment as discussed.
Ms. Burke?
I have a question and a comment. My question is, just for clarification, did we already add a couple of extra seats? Did we only vote and come back earlier? Additional seats for, um, Code R B A and something else, I'm sorry?
We have fifteen additional seats.
We've already done fifteen additional seats. We did a pretty good...
Just, just a point of clarification, thank you, Ms. Burke. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Owen is next. I haven't finished these in a little bit.
Sorry, Ms. Burke, I certainly didn't mean to cut you off.
Let Ms. Burke finish, Ms. Owen, and then Ms. Barlow.
All right. My original question was, I'm thinking back, I don't have my notes in front of me, that we earlier decided to add additional seats, additional spots for that program, which I think is excellent. And I'm asking, did we, and if that was approved, and is that in the budget?
Yes, we do have fifteen additional seats on the...
On the budget, you just, we just voted on. So, right now, we would have, how many seats total there?
Fifty.
Fifty, six, including fifteen that we already added. And also, I must say, going back to, uh, what I stated earlier regarding strategic plan, I'm not going in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
I feel that it would be wonderful to have lots more young people eligible for Code R B A, but we have so many other needs, um, and I really don't want to go back to council at this point. So, I would also be unable to support this. I know we're gonna be going back to council, but maybe not today, um, because they're gonna make us. So, but, um, I think let's start with their fifteen for now, is my view.
Ms. Barlow and Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I did want a quick point of clarification. So, uh, because Code R B A is ramping up year by year, we are, uh, we have to add new slots every year just to fill, uh, a new freshman class. Uh, so we won't actually be at a point until after the next budget cycle where we would see a flat cost and flat number of students year over year without making those changes. Uh, last year, we allocated, uh, twenty slots to Code R B A for the now, uh, freshman, uh, rising sophomore class. That amount has been reduced to fifteen. Uh, so my hope was that we could match the level that we provided last year because, um, it does, it does provide, it does put some constraints on a school that is trying to scale up to make sure that's providing those, uh, providing support for those students. And in particular, it's a, uh, it's a school that, um, derives most all of its, uh, funding from the, the student allotment. Uh, so they are, they are taking it as they're trying to grow, still have that space. Um, and in addition to that, just speaking to the school in particular, I think they, uh, they have a really pretty credible model and program. Uh, the most, about as equitable a model as you can have with regard to the student acceptance process. Uh, they have taken great efforts to make sure that they are accepting students from different socioeconomic backgrounds, uh, gender backgrounds, racial backgrounds, and, uh, and they really are providing, uh, an innovative, um, approach to education that, that inspires me about what, um, what public schools can do, particularly what I think, uh, R P S may be able to do in the future with a similar type of program. Uh, so my hope is that, that we can, uh, come up with some additional support for that. And, uh, and I understand reservations about going to council, uh, but at the same time, I have a hard time seeing council, uh, telling us that they don't want us to, um, add students to a school like this because the, the party might not be, be big enough.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. Um, I have a, a suggestion or, um, so, as, if, uh, Mr. Barlow would also consider revising the amendment to find the dollars, um, to instead put towards additional staff at Carver Elementary School. Um, I understand that, that, that Carver could certainly use, um, another, uh, AP level, uh, you know, administrator. And, um, and I, I do know that as a, as a board and district, we have, uh, committed to providing supports in that school that they need. And, um, and I would certainly support looking to find the dollars in, uh, the budget to be able to put towards that. Uh, I think that, that would be, uh, certainly overdue. And, um, and, uh, I think we would, uh, be well justified in whatever ask that would be made, uh, to council for that support. Thank you.
Before, if there are no other comments? Before, if there are no other comments, debate. Out all four opportunities for our students, all four options for our students. But what I do not support, I do not support this amendment because we have had 172 community meetings regarding the strategic plan. We've had community input. I do not support making adjustments in the strategic plan that council, they approved. We had advocates to advocate for the funding, for full funding of the strategic plan as well as funding for... To address much, many needs of our school facilities. So, with the strategic plan, council approved eighteen million dollars and council approved nineteen million dollars for the CIP. And as we probably stated last night, I don't ever recall receiving the funding support for schools, making education abroad. You know, they do not tell us how to spend. But in the ordinance, as we've done before, funding is allocated in categories. And if there are adjustments to budget allocation, we have to send a request for the reallocation of those dollars to council. But we talk about the public and we talk about trust and we talk about transparency. All the input, the public input that we had for the strategic plan, I am not in agreement to make adjustments when this is approved by council, the funding. Hard question to the original.
The amendment made by Mr. Barlow, seconded by Ms. Owen, to adopt the federal state of Ms. Burke amendment is to reduce the excellent day allotment from both... I'm sorry, from one hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, and to add fast slides to the RBA. And to add fast slides to the RBA for the RBA, for the student. Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
No.
Ms. Gibson.
No.
No. No. Ms. Gibson. No. Ms. Dawson. No. Ms. Gibson.
No.
Ms. Dawson. Ms. Gibson. Sixty. I'm sorry, I'm going to make that thirty-sixty. So, the amendment is... Any debate? Ms. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in anticipation of making another amendment. And this is something that I've spoken with the administration about before, also something that I've discussed. But here, the discussion, certainly discussion that helps provide support for Carver in particular. In particular, with the public condition, the contrary, the change of teachers at the school, the change in the rest of the staff at the school, and the excellence of the efforts to support the school. And then I've heard questions in terms related to whether we provide additional staff to help that, to make sure the class is... So, I would like, if we can hear your mind about what that... With that assessment goal we're looking on, at me or from Ms. Hughes in particular. Another, that I can speak to, like someone that has a... There's a lot of support for that issue.
And if that, yeah. As we do go through that process, minor adjustments sometimes, which we call leveling, we will certainly keep color in mind for additional administrative support to make sure that they have ability to continue to be successful. So, I can't guarantee anything, but that is my commitment to support to prioritize Carver as we think about that leveling process.
We also did remind me about staffing. We did allocate an additional deputy math resource teacher in addition to their Title I teachers this year. So, they do receive an additional coaching support for math instruction as well.
Ms. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I appreciate the commitment to review this as we go through the leveling process. What I'm concerned about is whether... Is what factors are going into reviewing that leveling process. So, it's clear to me that a lot of these decisions are made based on enrollment in the number of classes and things of that nature. But I do think that Carver could use some more. So, my intent is to put forth another bite amendment. But I want to be respectful of the administration's determination here. So, is there another staff person that we can put that we can commit to with this phase?
I'm hesitant to make staffing decisions on the fly like this, but I, again, will reiterate our commitment to do everything we can to make sure that Carver gets the support it needs. And I'm glad to sit down with you and walk through what some of those possibilities might be like. Certainly, we want to make sure that Principal Giles continues to be successful as she has begun to be so this year. And again, my commitment is to make sure that we prioritize Carver in those discussions. And the process is dynamic, so I don't want to overpromise on what is available. But if we find that there are a couple of additional FTEs through the leveling process, again, my commitment publicly is to make sure that we prioritize Carver for that support.
So, hard question to the original motion. Ms. Gibson.
I'd like to go ahead and motion that we amend the budget to include an additional assistant principal at Carver Elementary School and fund that by reducing the line items in the strategic plan going towards travel and celebrations.
Ms. Gibson, can you please join with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we need a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Gibson and submitted by Mr. Barlow. To amend the main motion. And while Mr. Barlow is writing the session, or Ms. Gibson is writing the motion. Amended, amended. Any debate? Ms. Owen.
And I appreciate that Carver had an especially difficult time. But we have a number of schools in the district that have had big leadership changes this year. This was my district that had a particularly abrupt leadership change this year. So, I'm not prepared to single up Carver for special support when I feel like that's something that I don't know about every single one of our schools and what their needs are. And I therefore do not support.
Ms. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll stop dwelling on this, but just to speak to Carver one more time in particular. I agree, a number of our schools have undergone leadership changes, certainly a number of our schools are going to undergo leadership changes this year as well. What I'm concerned about is whether or to what extent our students have been under-resourced at Carver for quite some time, given the fact that there were performance metrics that suggest that our students were performing better there than they otherwise, than they actually were. So, it's... There's certainly potential, and I'd like to hear more about this from the administration, potentially a future meeting or a future discussion at Carver or something of that nature about what types of resources may have been missed out on by virtue of the fact that allocations were made contingent or based on assertions that ultimately held to be untrue for years.
Hard question. To the amendment to the main motion.
The amendment made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Barlow, is to amend the main motion to add an assistant principal to Carver Elementary School and fund position with reductions to travel and celebration line items in the strategic plan. Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
No.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
No.
Ms. Owen.
No.
Ms. Segini.
Yes.
Ms. Dohm.
No.
Ms. Page.
No.
Motion fails by four. Amendment fails by four. It's by Mr. Barlow, calling yes, Ms. Gibson calling yes, Ms. Garcia calling yes. Okay, thank you.
So, hard question to the main motion, again.
Again, the main motion was made by Ms. Burke, seconded by Ms. Owen, to adopt fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget in the amount of three hundred and eleven million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And the CIP 2020 to 2024 budget in the amount of nineteen million and special regular fund budget in the amount of eighty-seven million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Any discussion? Ms. Gibson, Ms. Cosby, and Ms. Burke.
I thought to motion that we amend the motion so that we're going on the CIP and the operational budget separately.
Chair, do we have a second?
I would gladly agree to that recommendation, I call it a blessing. So, second.
So, it's been moved by Ms. Gibson. Amendment.
To remove the CIP budget from the... Yeah.
Any discussion?
You want any?
Hard question. Hard question.
The amendment was made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Young, to remove the CIP budget from the main motion and will run it separately. Ms. Dohm.
No.
Ms. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Young. Ms. Asby.
No.
Ms. Burke.
No.
Ms. Owen.
No.
Ms. Segini.
No.
Ms. Page.
No.
Motion fails six way. Amendment fails six way.
So, hard question to the main motion.
The main motion, again, was to adapt the fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget in the amount of three hundred and eleven million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. The CIP budget of 2020-2024. The CIP 2020-2024 budget in the amount of nineteen million and special regular fund budget in the amount of eighty-seven million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one. The motion was made by Ms. Burke, seconded by Ms. Owen. And Ms. Cosby.
Hard question. Ms. Cosby.
I just wanted to note that I will be going against this budget. Once again, I will just reiterate that I feel as if the school work process has been disingenuous, as was the first process when we approved the budget. I, while appreciative to the mayor and to the council, do not believe that our ask was large enough and that this budget fully funds our needs. I had hoped that we would have an opportunity after we approved the first budget as we clearly articulated to our constituents that the work will continue and the hard work will start. And unfortunately, we have not engaged in that. And, you know, there is a reason why this budget is in the fun line with city council, but it is because there is a lack of confidence in the plan and a lack of confidence and accountability. And I just hope that as we move forward, that we do embrace the opportunity to have full discussions, you know, about whatever subject has come before this board as opposed to what I consider antics such as this passing blocks of recommendations as opposed to even looking at breaking things out individually. But I will be going against this budget. Thank you.
Ms. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Much like when we first started going through the budget process, I felt toward through the process. I will say that I really appreciate the support of the administration in taking certain actions that I requested to improve the budget and certainly that others such as Mrs. Gibson brought up such as in the past, such as severance payments.